Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, February 20, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Pre-agenda item for today is Bill Number 1273. Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Jody Hirsch as a Member to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for Term to Expire, December 2, 2022. Bill Number 1382. Resolution Appointing Dr. Shannon Thorpe-Gilliam as a Member of the Board of Directors of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for Term to Expire, March 26, 2020. This seat was previously filled by Greg Jones. And Bill Number 1383. Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Lindsay Powell as a Member to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for Term to Expire, December 2, 2023. Bill Number 698. In the Finance and Law Committee chaired by Reverend Burgess, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative, Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts to Reflect Current Best Practices in Local Government Procurement. Bill Number 1370. Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon, Inc. of $17,500 to be Deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1385. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative, Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts by Amending and Supplementing Section 161.38 City of Pittsburgh Service Worker Prevailing Wage Ordinance. This legislation is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. The Public Works Committee, Mrs. Kell Smith is the Chair. Bill Number 1376. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to Provide Funding to Conduct a Recycling Education Program and Purchase Blue Recycling Bins and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $350,000 for this Stated Purpose. Bill Number 1377. Resolution Amending Resolution 714 of 2018 for the Mayor, the Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement with Quedica for Professional Services relating to Fleet Telematics and Snow Route Optimization at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,731,832 over a Three-Year Period with Two One-Year Optional Renewals. Human Resources Committee, Mrs. Harris is the Chair. Bill Number 1309. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources in Civil Service and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc. for Citywide Time and Attendance System and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof Not to Exceed $1,720,000. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. Bill Number 1213. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordnances that Certain Site Known as the Westinghouse Memorial Located in Shinley Park in the 14th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 1371. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure Under Title 11 of the Code of Ordnances that Certain Structure Known as Carrick Municipal Hall Located at 1806 Brownsville Road in the 29th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management, Mrs. Strasburger is the Chair. Bill Number 1378. Resolution Amending Resolution 26 of 2018 entitled Resolution Authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Qusen Technologies, Inc. for the Purchase of Constituent Relationship Management Software Services Necessary for the Operation of the City's 311 Response Line for a Period of Five Years Which Will Include 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Total Cost Not to Exceed $162,600 by Extending the Term for One Additional Year to Include 2019 and by Increasing the Authorized Amount by $53,595.30 for a Total Sum Not to Exceed Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. Eric Connor is the Chair. Bill Number 1372. Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sell of Land by and Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Module Design, Inc., or an Entity to be Formed for the Sell of Block 83A Lot 266 in the 11th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 9, New Construction at 5454 Black Street. Bill Number 1373. Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sell of Land by and Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Module Design, Inc., and Bloomfield Garfield Corporation or an Entity to be Formed for the Sell of Property in the 11th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 9, New Construction of Affordable Housing at 5456 Black Street. Bill Number 1374. Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract by Disposition by Sell of Land by and Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Action Housing, Inc., or a Related Entity for the Sell of Property in the 6th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 7, for New Construction for Affordable Housing at 3330 through 3350 Penn Avenue. Bill Number 1375. Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract or Contracts for Disposition by Sell of Land by and Between the URA of Pittsburgh and CWPD LLC for the Sell of Property in the 28th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number 2. This is for the New Construction of the Broadhead Fording Road and 3520 through 3550 Mazette Place. That concludes the reading of the legislation for today. Thank you and have a marvelous day.
Good morning, everyone, on this wonderfully snowy morning. We're kind of operating here on a little bit of a skeleton crew. A lot of people are trying to get in, but we...
People came in.
Yeah, yeah. But we are here to do some pre-agenda interviews. We had a number of them scheduled. Unfortunately, some did need to cancel due to the weather, but Lindsay Powell is here. She's an appointee of the Mayor's Office, the Urban Redevelopment Authority Board. So we thank you, Lindsay, for being here. We're going to start the public, or our pre-agenda interview by recognizing that we're joined by Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilwoman Kell Smith. I'm Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this morning's public hearing, and we will begin, please, Madam Clerk, if we could, with the reading of Bill 1383.
Bill 1383. Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Lindsay Powell as a Member to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for Term to Expire, December 2, 2023.
That's great. Thank you. So Lindsay, good welcome. Good morning. Thanks for making it in here. I'm sure you've seen these before. We try to keep them rather informal. You're amongst friends. We want you to be comfortable. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and maybe your background. We do have your resume. Let us know a little bit about your thoughts about serving on the Urban Redevelopment Authority, which is really one of the most important appointments that we entertain here, and then we'll open it up to members who might have some questions or comments.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here. My name is Lindsay Powell. I'm the Assistant Chief of Staff, Tamir Pudido, and I largely work on equity and inclusion issues. My portfolio largely includes issues surrounding women and children, families, racial equity, economic development, community engagement, arts, and largely land use. And so I'm incredibly humbled and really excited to hopefully be serving on the URA in this capacity. Land use, I think, is incredibly interesting but also important in this time in Pittsburgh where we can think creatively and intentionally about Main Street development, about using land use and land care as a workforce development tool, which are some of the things that I work on, on the Mayor's Office side, but I'm really excited to explore as well as pursue and expand at the URA with your successful appointment.
Great. Thanks, Lindsay. Councilwoman Strasburger, may I begin with you?
I really don't have too many questions. I guess, you know, I know that your work, your resume and your work in the Mayor's Office speaks for itself when it comes to your dedication to the issues that you mentioned and particularly the issues that the URA works on. I think, you know, in a lot of appointments like these, there's a ramp-up time and there's a time then you need to learn exactly, you know, the intricacies of such a large and varied and complex organization and authority. And really, it just takes the, it just takes a little bit of time and the ability to learn about that, to be able to, you know, get your feet underneath you. So I have no worries there, no concerns as to, you know, how quickly you'll be able to get up to speed. I guess, you know, I guess the only questions I have right now are, you know, from the outsider's perspective or somewhat insider's perspective are there, you know, the mayor has indicated sort of a change in priorities of the URA. Not a full change, not a full makeover of the URA, but, you know, a slight change in priorities of focusing on smaller developments versus larger developments, and is that something that you've been following, and do you have any thoughts about that approach?
Definitely. I think that that's really critical, thinking about the smaller parcels, the smaller bits of land that we can put back into usefulness. Going back to what I was saying about, you know, Main Street redevelopment, I think that that's exactly a part of that plan, is thinking about, you know, how do we do the large-scale construction? How do we do the large-scale development? But also those critical cornerstone pieces of neighborhood development that we can focus on that will help, you know, put other parcels back into usefulness, that'll start to kind of spurn and turn, you know, neighborhood development. Again, as a part of my role in the Mayor's Office, it's something that I work closely with right now in my capacity with URAs, thinking about that kind of small Main Street development. And so that focus of the URA moving forward is something that I'm familiar with and also excited to pursue further.
I have no further questions.
Kell Smith?
Thank you. Good morning. Thanks for being here, especially in this horrible weather.
Happy to be here.
But I, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the URA. As I, we spoke briefly prior to the meeting, and as I mentioned the other day, I have a lot of concern because the URA Board is comprised of everyone from the East End of the City of Pittsburgh and no one from southwest of the river, not one person on the board. So when Sam Williamson was first appointed, he, I was really happy he reached out to me. We took him on a tour. He went on a tour of our district, and I shared with him a lot of our district, and the really diverse part of our district is that, or I should say, the diversity of our district is that we have some really high-end homes, we have some really, really struggling communities, we have, we're probably the most diverse community, district in all the city of Pittsburgh in terms of everything. And I think, I was talking about this to somebody in the Mayor's Office just a few weeks ago, that not just in terms of race or, but in terms of age and gender, I mean, just everything, income levels, it just has a lot. And so I'd really like for people to get to know my district, and I think with the affordable housing, and I talk about this often, we're talking about how affordable housing is so important in the city of Pittsburgh, but for my area, market rate housing is important to stabilize our area. We don't have enough. According to the study, we have an overabundance of affordable housing and not a balance. And so for me, when you're talking about advocating for housing, I want to make sure that you're going to advocate for what our community needs, not just a blanket program or plan for the entire district, for the entire city, that there's different neighborhoods and different, even within my own district, different neighborhoods need different things. You know, we're starting to see some incline in some of the properties in Mount Washington, and honestly, homeownership is huge in our district. It's becoming more concerning to places in Mount Washington. They want more homeownership, less rentals, because they're starting to see an upscale and, or uptick in the rentals and not so much in the homeownership. They want to see more, more housing. So making it affordable is important. So to me, I just want to take you on that tour. I want to show you, but could you tell me what you're familiar with now in our district?
Certainly. In my capacity now, I do, again, a lot of work in the out-of-school time as well, and so I'm very familiar with Sheridan and Langley. It's a space that we go to often, thinking about, they have the Makerspace there, and also thinking about how we can increase usage of those spaces and other spaces for out-of-school time. Again, you know, we don't have any control as the city of, you know, when they're in school, but we have, I think, a very strong and unique responsibility to ensure that when they're not in school, when kids aren't in their classrooms, that there is safe, quality spaces for them to go and learn and, you know, play. So Langley is a space that I'm very familiar with, but I'm really excited to go on a tour with you in the West and see a little bit more.
I want to show you more because I think that's part of my concern, is that everyone from every administration that I've seen, they're familiar with Sheridan, mostly because of some of the concerns and challenges they have. They're familiar with the West End proper, and they're familiar with Mount Washington. There's 17 neighborhoods in my district that people need to familiarize themselves with a little bit more, and I do think this administration has made more of an attempt, and we've worked together a lot than I've seen in years, I can just say. But for me, there's a business district in Elliot that's struggling, that needs some attention. There's buildings, five, a block, it takes an entire block in Sheridan, five buildings that are purchased by the URA and investment by the URA would mean the world to that community. And we have seen the purchase of Stevens School. We were able, with the help of this administration, we were, and the URA, we were able to repurpose three of our closed school buildings, which is a challenge.
That's quite an accomplishment.
And it really is an accomplishment. I mean, and one was only $25,000 from the city, the other had no funding from the city, and the, but it just helped with the process, and the third is the city purchased through the URA. And so I'd like to see more of an investment, because I mean, when we're talking about hundreds, thousands, and even millions now starting to come, it doesn't, it pales in comparison to the millions going into the East End. And when you see the Board, the URA, you can understand the correlation between, the importance of having a Board member to say, hey, wait a minute, there's some properties in the West End that we need to invest in. And right now, there's some places, Stratmore Street, we've talked about, we've talked about the buildings in Sheridan, we talked about the Nobles Town Road development that we're working on with the administration. Parkway Center Mall is a huge, you know, project in our side of town, but yet I'd like to see more of a commitment in some of these areas. And I do want to thank Dan Gilman from the Mayor's Office, because he scheduled some meetings for the Nobles Town Road development, some other things that he's worked, working with me on. But to me, I want that same commitment from the URA. I want to start seeing the URA making investments into our side of town and the same, with the same devotion to the occasion and excitement that they have in the East End. And as an East End girl, I grew up on Fifth Avenue, I value what they're doing in the East End. I just want that same shared across the city of Pittsburgh. I don't know if the South Hills ones, certain things, I know Councilman Coghill, if he were here, he would be advocating for his area. So we'd just like to see it southwest of the river and share it a little bit more. And when we talk about the Main Streets, you know, it's great when we're talking about Main Streets, but it's, the Main Streets to some people are, may only have one business, they may not have several. And like a place like Elliot that only has a few, a little bit of investment from the city would go a long way. And on Stratmore Street, there's only a few buildings, and yet there's only a couple building, property owners, but an investment and some interest from the city of Pittsburgh would turn that whole community around and, or stabilize that whole community, because it's actually a pretty nice neighborhood. I think people hear certain things and they don't realize it's isolated to one section of the neighborhood, but the majority of the neighborhood is stable and actually has a lot of homeownership. So that's it for me. I'm going to schedule a drive-through with you. I want to make sure that you're also, I think, because people know of Sheridan and they know of certain neighborhoods and you already are in the community, sometimes you, people in the administration and other places, what I notice is they hear from one or two people from my district, and they think that they really are telling some story about our area, or they might hear from five people, but that doesn't really reflect what the majority of my 17 neighborhoods feel or think. And so, and sometimes it's not even, even close to being accurate. So I just want to make sure that you're working with me, with my office, and with our community groups, and, I mean, not one, not two, and not the ones that self-identified as community leaders, but ones that the community thinks of as real leaders. So I'd like to work with you on that. I'll take you for the tour, we'll talk about it more.
I look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you for...
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I hope, can I just say, I hope you can handle on the URA, because I think that there's, I think the administration has a good vision and a good view of what they'd like to see happen there. And I think that the URA, to me, is one of my, it used to be one of the departments I hated the most, now it's one I like the most, to be honest with you, because I like some of the people that really, we've gotten to work, and they really have helped. They've probably been one of the only departments that's really invested in our community and really helped in our area in ways that they actually listen and talk and show some interest. I think that it would be greater to see that interest backed up with some dollars. That's all. That's it for me. Thank you.
That's all?
I could go on if you want me to. Jody's here, though.
Yeah, Jody's here, yeah. We're, you know, maybe we'll just finish now and then we'll bring Jody up for a separate interview, if that's okay. I just, I wanted to focus a little bit, Lindsay, on your, on your focus on smaller parcels of property and how important the, not to lose sight of the development benefits of smaller parcels. Recently, the Belts Hoover Consensus Group worked with members of the URA to help secure some properties in the Belts Hoover neighborhood for repurposing, for infill housing, which I was really excited to hear about. And we have another property in Knoxville. It's the Knoxville Christian Church that is hopefully going to be assumed by the Knoxville Community Council. And we were just working with Economic Development South just yesterday or Monday, and putting together a strategy to come to the URA for some assistance in that.
They get around.
Yeah, yeah, they want to...
They work in Ingram, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Who?
Economic Development South. I'm kind of curious about that organization.
Yeah.
I'm going to look into it a little bit.
Well, it's, we have a good thing going here, I think, and Knoxville Community Council is looking to assume a role in the ownership and stewardship of the Knoxville Christian Church and, and perhaps even look to reinvent it, much the way South Hills High School was reinvented and repurposed. We also assisted the Belts Hoover Consensus Group with the purchase of the Belts Hoover School. Now, I'm not sure how familiar you might be with the property, but it's an utterly amazing building. It's an historic landmark, and it's sort of the cornerstone of pride for many, many people that live there. And so recently, we just closed on it, and the Belts Hoover Consensus Group has taken ownership, and we're going to be coming around to, once again, look at some kind of investment from probably multiple partners, but I think there's a role for the URA in that as well, too, to reinvent that space, and that could probably look something like South Hills Retirement, some kind of mixed-use property that has some housing but some community benefit to it as well. And we have all come to the agreement and realization that it will take some time, we can't do this overnight, but we clearly are, everyone is interested in rowing in the same direction, accomplishing the same goal, and, and we're going to need your help to do those things. So much like the Councilwoman wanted to take you around, I'd love to do that, too. I'm going to be out the next week. I have to...
But I buy her lunch, so I hope you do this, huh?
Well, we could do, we could do it together, we could do it separately, you know, but we could, however you want to do that. But it was great when Sam Williamson came onto the Board. He did reach out to members, and we did take ride-arounds, and it was really helpful, it was very informative, to take him around and share with him some of the challenges we have and some of the things that we need to do. So I'd look forward to setting that up with you as well, too. We'll let the weather break just a little bit, and then we'll get out there, okay? Okay. So members, do you have anything else for Lindsay at this time?
No, looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, me too. Thanks for being here.
Maybe you'll buy a house in the West End.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lindsay. Have a good day.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Jody, would you come on up, please? Thanks. So normally, we would have done these together, you know, we know there's limitations out there this morning with weather and people being able to get in and all those kinds of things, so we might have some repeat questions and/or comments for you, but generally speaking, we'd like to keep this very sort of casual. You're amongst friends. We kind of just want to get to know a little bit about you. Members have their resume. You can start with just telling us a little bit about yourself, your background, what you bring to your appointment to the URA Board. I will open it up to members for questions or comments, and we'll start by reading the Bill 1273, which will announce your appointment.
Bill 1273. Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Jody Hirsch as a Member to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for Term to Expire, December 2, 2022.
Okay, thanks, Madam Clerk. So Jody, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thanks. I guess I know most of you guys, but...
Oh, wow. That doesn't let you off the hook.
What's that?
That doesn't let you off the hook.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm pretty excited about it. I've had one meeting so far where I was reminded how much I have to learn, but I think I bridge a good gap between the community groups that I work with professionally and personally and city government, who I have worked with in the past and know fairly well. So I'm hoping to be a voice for the community on the authority. It's small, so that'll learn quickly, so I can catch up and contribute. But yeah, I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, so I'd like to know what you know about the West End.
Not enough.
Okay.
Will you take me on a tour?
You're going to go on the tour with us? I mean, one of the things I have to say, and I mentioned it previously, is that when Sam Williamson first was appointed, he went on a tour with us, and I really do feel like he has an interest, because he calls before something happens. So I actually want to say, I usually don't like anybody being appointed to the Board that's not going to be accountable to the public, but I was actually excited about him being appointed as the chairperson, so I'm excited about that. And hopefully, we'll be able to work with him and hold him accountable for some of the things that we, that he's talked about doing in our neighborhoods. But I, for me, when you talk about being the voice for the, or being the bridge for some of the community groups, some of the community groups you represent don't have a voice in my area. They pretend, some of them pretend they do, but they don't. And so I wouldn't want them to be my voice on the URA Board, or for the voice for 17 neighborhoods. I think sometimes you get, my concern has been that this, everyone thinks of my areas just a few neighborhoods, that they think they have a whole picture of 17 neighborhoods, and they really don't have any idea of what my district is, consists of. And it's very diverse in very many ways. And so I'd want every one of those neighborhoods to have their own, you know, I want them to have what they want and not what somebody from the East End tells them that they need. And that's what I've noticed, a lot happens around here, is I think the East End has a vision of what should happen in the city of Pittsburgh. Well, their vision for the East End is not necessarily the vision for the West End, and, or was not a shared vision, not in all neighborhoods, it may be for some of them, but not all neighborhoods. So it's really important for people to get to know my area and to get to know my people and the people that work, that live and invest in our area, not the people that are politically connected, not the people that are connected to community groups, because most of my district, that would not, that would really not be how I had identified most of them. Most of the people aren't going to come out to the community group, most of the people aren't going to come out to get involved in politics, but they do care about their communities and they do invest a lot of times. I tell people all the time, we have a woman that, she runs all the softball programs, you know, a lot of the softball programs, I should say, across the city. She's involved really heavily in sports, and yet everybody knows her, she helps everybody across the city, she helps everyone in our district, yet you'll never see her at a community meeting, you'll never see her at a political function. So this area doesn't know her, but our area knows her. And so those are the people that I would like for you to know and get to know and understand, that they speak for a lot of people sometimes that, you know, and give us a clear picture of what, you know, each neighborhood wants. So that's important to me, because I think when you have a lot of the appointees from the East End, they don't understand the area, because they don't know the people when they don't know, they don't know the players. So for me, I'd like to know what your, what your thoughts are investing, because what I see the disparity is, there's a lot of investment in the East End, not a lot in the West End, not a lot in the South Hills, and I don't know what they have, other than stadiums in the, in the North Side, I don't know what their investment is there. How do you see advocating for areas and investment in other areas and using that, because there's going to be a lot of pressure to put the dollars into the East going to be a lot of pressure to put the dollars into the East End, because there is a lot of vote in the East End, there's a lot of powerful people in the East End, my family's from the East End, and, you know, my mother still lives there, my sister, I have a lot of family members there. But I want to see that money spread around the city of Pittsburgh. So, tell me how you plan on advocating for that.
Well, I mean, one of the reasons that I'm excited about this and interested in it is because I have a pretty deep belief in equitable development. And so, that's, you know, not just development between, that's not just investing in communities and neighborhoods as well as developers, it's investing it equitably throughout the city. So, I kind of think about it in a broader sense, and I think that if I'm going to be there and I'm going to, you know, be committed to equitable development, then that means paying attention to all of the city neighborhoods, not just the ones directly surrounding me with the large voice, so.
And let me just say, I know you very well and I think that you'll do a great job, and I know that you're, you'll fight for what needs to happen, but part of that, your fighting has been involved in the affordable housing. And as just mentioned previously, for our area, we don't need any more affordable housing, we need, we actually need, according to the study, is we need more market-rate housing. So, how do you advocate for that, for an area like mine, to help stabilize our areas?
I mean, I think that, you know, essentially, the URA is an economic development organization, so there needs to be data to, you know, look at and decide what each neighborhood needs, and hopefully, that data, which seems to exist, I certainly haven't come through it all, would indicate just what you just said. So, you know, that's not an area where we would necessarily need to push for mixed-use or affordable as much.
But would you push for market rate? Would you push for market rate in an area?
If that's what, I mean, if that's, I'm there to try and represent what the communities and neighborhoods need. If that's what you tell me and your people, who I haven't met yet but will on the tour, need, then I think, yeah, that's what I'd push for.
Because that's, that's basically what they told us, is that we need more market-rate housing, and we don't have enough upscale or market-rate housing. We have Mount Washington, which has some great places, Westwood, which has a lot, but there's still that, there's not that stability, there's not enough. So, in order for us to bring that stability to areas like Sheridan and Ellie and other places, we need to have some of that housing. But also, at the same end, I want to say, even though the, it will tell you that Ferrywood does not need it, because they have affordable housing now, that's what the residents want. The majority of residents, they want some, a place for seniors to live. And one of the things I don't see us doing here is doing patio homes for senior citizens. I see us doing a lot of homes for families or for single fam, or rentals. I don't see anything that's a good place for senior citizens to retire and to, so I'd like to see some, some attention in that area, because that's what seniors are asking us for. They want to retire, they want to stay in their communities, they can't maintain their homes. But, so they would like to see more of market-rate homes, they'd like to see more homes for disabilities and accessibility. And so, so I'd just like to make sure that you're advocating for all those different things, not just one set of things, that there's some openness and willingness to hear what the communities, you know, each one, even if the data doesn't say they need it, if that's what the residents want, that's what I want them to have, so, okay.
I think, I mean, I think of my role as to listen to what the community wants and try and advocate for that. So, I'm not going in with a set agenda.
Good.
What the West End needs, I don't know what the West End needs, so.
And I think that unfortunately, some of the people that have been vocal in the West End have no idea what the entire West End's about. And so, I think that would be great to hear what the real West, you know, a lot of the real residents, vocal residents, involved residents, connected people really want to see happen. And I may think you have some good people, but I think that it's not a clear picture of all the neighborhoods, that's all. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Looking forward to working with you.
You too.
And the tour.
Can we wait till it's not?
I think you should go on a tour, when it's snowing, like our residents have to, down the hills, to see their challenges. But, you know, just one more thing, one of the things Sam Williamson, he was impressed with was, in Sheridan, there's a place called Sheridan Park Co-op, and it's a housing co-op, and the houses are thirty thousand dollars, and they're maintained meticulously. I mean, they're beautiful, and he asked how that started, well, I just found out yesterday from somebody, it was actually URA property.
Oh, okay.
Initially. So, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that too, and maybe get some information to all of the board members about how that, how that was started, and maybe duplicate that in other places, because it's been a huge success for decades, so, thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for being here on the snowy day.
Sure.
I really don't have a question, I guess what I'm, you know, we know each other well, and what I'm hoping that you'll bring to the URA Board is a couple of things. One, you have the trust of many, many members of certain parts of the city and community groups and community members, and my hope is that, you know, through working and coordinating with council members in other areas, like Councilwoman Kail Smith, as you just, as you just heard, that you'll become a trusted resource for, on the board for community members in, you know, many, many neighborhoods across the city. So, I'm looking forward to that, and also, given your skillset and communications, helping URA continue, I mean, they've done, they've made great strides lately in communicating all the good work that they do, revamping the website, you know, great annual reports, but continuing that work to ensure that they're getting their message out to what I think can be a skeptical city and a skeptical set of long-term, longtime residents of the city about what the URA does, and all the really, really great programs that often don't get the attention that they deserve, and the staff people who are doing just fantastic work in really small ways, in small but meaningful ways in communities and in main streets and in entrepreneurship and all sorts of things. Equity, absolutely. So, I mean, if you, if you have any thoughts about that or response to that, but that's mostly what I'm hoping you'll bring to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I've only had one of three two-and-a-half-hour orientation sessions, and I have to say, even just after the first one, I was kind of floored by all of the things that they've been doing, that there's no narrative about, you know, it's not really, you guys probably know, but I think the general public does not necessarily know. And because communications is my thing, I am kind of excited to be able to take some of those stories and some of that work that they're doing and talk about it, which I think can build some trust in the neighborhoods and maybe make the URA a better partner. You know, storytelling's really important. So, particularly around equity, I was really, I was really taken by, I actually walked into the room for the orientation and it was all of the URA leadership, and there was one white male who was standing there, Robert, and that was it. And I'm in progressive circles all the time, and I never walk into rooms like that. So, that was really pretty significant.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Harris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pretty snowy out there.
I thought I was going to have to cancel, but the kids did have school.
I know your name from somewhere. Do you have a relative?
I mean, I worked in council for a while.
Okay, maybe that's.
Councilman Gilman, yeah. At the time, then Councilman Gilman.
I'm sorry?
Then Councilman Gilman.
Okay. I sort of feel the same way that Councilwoman Smith feels, there's a lot that's not happening in the north, south, or west, and parts of the East End. And I would hope that, first you said what the communities need, but then, after that, you said what the communities want. And the communities know what they want, and if you stop in and talk to each of the groups, you find out real fast where they're at. They are actually trying to, on the North Side, rebuild homes that are shabby. There were three that just got torn down, that I had two more developers wanting to look at it. And that was property that the whole North Side had an interest in. So, that was very sad, and I hope that never happens again. But you look like you've been involved for a while, so you do know.
You look like you've been around.
Is that a compliment or an insult?
I don't know.
It's been a long morning. Sorry.
But it would be nice to get the board to get to know each of the neighborhoods too. We have the North Side leadership, which I hope we put together years ago, and we have people from each neighborhood on that board. However, we also have each neighborhood, and it'd be nice to see the people from the URA getting around and talking to the neighborhoods to see what their needs are.
For sure.
And they do more than anybody.
Okay, good. So, I'm going to follow up just a little bit on the comments that the councilwoman made, and because I think they're valid points. If, if one were to examine on a much bigger scale the things that have taken place north and east of the city, as opposed to south and west of the city, I think you're going to see dynamically different development. If you look along the riverfronts, you're going to see stadiums, you're going to see casinos, you're going to see lovely parks and trails and beautiful riverfront development. If you go further out, successful development always hangs on successful development. So, if you take a ride at McKnight Road today and see what's taking place, you're seeing a whole new transformation taking place there, from shops that used to be things like Value City, they're now becoming the Container Store and Nordstrom Rack, and take a look at what's happening at Ross Park Mall, and they just met with their planning commission there to do major extensive renovations, they're going to tear down the old Sears Building and put in all kinds of different, you know, higher-end amenities. If you go even further out, McKnight Road, and you start getting into Wexford and places like that, you're going to see the whole Lowe's development that's taking place up there, and there's all kinds of housing, different retail and stuff that's hanging on there. But if you, and again, I'll make the argument that successful development hangs on successful development. If you head south or west of the river, you'll see some things that clearly happened along the riverfront, especially in the South Side, under the Murphy administration, South Shore Court, South Side Works. But if you go beyond that, it's very difficult to begin to make the argument that successful development has hung on successful development. And the further you get out there, what you ultimately find is Century Three, which has been condemned and going to be bulldozed. So, again, successful development hangs on successful development, and while we had a good start at one time, especially along the riverfront, west and south, we have failed in our, our ability to continue that and to bring that into the different residential neighborhoods of the west and south. And so, I just want you to remain cognizant of that.
I'll remind her every day.
Really do, we need to do better. We definitely need to do better, and we're here to help you achieve that.
Can I just say real quickly?
Sure.
We don't want to become the East End, we love our identity, we love our, you know, our neighborhoods, we love the uniqueness each one has, but that doesn't, but we need some investment, so we don't, so we can, you know, some of our neighborhoods can be stabilized, and some we want to keep stable. So, it's just minimal investment compared to what we're asking for and what others are asking for, but yet, we want that investment, because we actually pay more taxes southwest of the river than anybody else, I'm just going to say that. It's our money you're spending everywhere.
Really good point. I remember back in like eighty-eight and ninety, people saying that South Side was going to be the new Shady Side, and I remember saying, oh my God, I hope not, because it's not Shady Side, it's the South Side, and that's what makes it unique. Each of our ninety-two now, I think it is, ninety-two neighborhoods has that unique character to it, and that is, each one of those building blocks is what makes the bigger picture that is, that is Pittsburgh. And if there's anything I think that we have worked, all of us have worked so very hard on, is to recognize the uniqueness of each pocket of people that have assembled and what they bring to the character of the city, but at the same time, making certain that resources are distributed equitably and that everybody has a voice at the table and a chance to really, you know, to grow and be well and healthy and safe and have wonderful public amenities and great parks and trails if they decide, and good housing stock, and a balance. I think what we always argue for here is balance. We, you know, I think part of what we're seeing that happened in East Liberty is that it got out of balance, right? You know, well, actually, not that quickly, if you really think about it, that was about sixteen, eighteen years in the making, while the councilman, then Councilman Beduda was on the council. I mean, East Liberty was not what it is today, and he worked very, very hard to turn that, to make that shift happen. But what happens, much like sometimes even in the South Side, you get too much of a good thing, right? And we get out of balance, where we want to, we want to make certain we don't sway too far in either direction, we want to make certain that we kind of, you know, stay in a, in balance, I don't know how better to say that. So, that's what we're, that's what we're arguing for, and I think that's what equity is all about, isn't it?
You should be the appointee for the Southwest.
Maybe I should be.
I'm just saying.
I'm just saying. But anyway, thank you for being here. We could, we could have this conversation forever and ever and ever. I want to extend the invitation to you as well, perhaps, Councilwoman, we can find a way to work that out. We'll take a, we'll take a really good day and we'll just, we'll run and around southwest Pittsburgh and show you, you know, what's really happening there and that are great things. But, you know, but we want to continue that and we want to constantly improve.
Yeah, can I say, I think that a lot of times when people forget that there has been a lot in our area that has been done, because there's seventeen neighborhoods, it's so spread out, it's difficult to see. But we've had a stadium built, we've had Amazon move in, I mean, you know, there's been a lot of different things, ModCloth moved over there, there's a lot of things that happened in District Two, that it's so spread out, it's difficult to see. But if it were all together like they are in some neighborhoods, you would see, wow, there was a lot of investment there. But a lot of that investment was private investment, a lot of it did not come from public dollars or the URA, and most of it was started on their, you know, most of it was started on their own, with, you know, private companies.
Well, so now you bring up another good point, now I'm going to jump on that.
The mayor's office promised me that they would appoint somebody from southwest of the river on the board, and they asked for some suggestions, so I do want to say that I'm going to, when the next opportunity comes open, we'll make sure it's somebody southwest of the river.
Yeah, the, the, the argument the councilwoman's making is, is a valid argument, that we are, private development is going to come in at the assistance of public development, right? They're partnerships, right? And when, when private development begins to see an investment by the city and the URA and saying, boy, we believe in this, perhaps we can believe in it too, right? So, of course, they want to come in, they want to make some money, we get that, it's a capitalist culture, we want to see those partnerships. But again, we want to see that in balance, we don't want somebody to come in and totally gentrify an area, and all of a sudden, you can't afford anything and everybody has to move out and be displaced, and, you know, but a good partnership between private investment, public investment, and keeping a healthy balance in our neighborhoods, we can do that, we can definitely do that. So, there.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you. And thank you, Jody, for being here, we greatly appreciate it. We will vote on the appointments coming up on this coming Tuesday, which is February the twenty-sixth.
We should arrange for a whole URA tour, because we have David too now, I mean, we should arrange for a whole URA tour, get a van and go.
Get a van.
I'll buy dinner, lunch, whatever.
She, she has to do that, so.
Well, as long as, yeah.
No, but you do.
I'll make sure you remember my district.
It wouldn't be the same if you didn't buy dinner. Okay, so, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
We have to take a five-minute break while we reorganize cameras, and then we'll start the Wednesday Standing Committee Meeting. So, may have a motion to adjourn.
Some.
So, thank you.
Good morning on this cold snowy day. Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Wednesday, February twenty, two thousand nineteen. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address City Council, please start off your name, address, and/or neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means your time has begun, yellow light means one minute to summarize, red light means your time has expired. I will remind everyone the rules of council state, that comment is limited to actions or deliberations which are before council or maybe before council, and profanity will not be permitted, and order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown, and for, for a second, I'm going to ask the Lord to guide my tongue. I do not appreciate coming through the snow, and the meeting's supposed to start at ten. Yours can make it here at nine-thirty, you can start a minute at the meeting, you can keep on going through to ten, ten-something for that meeting that we, the people, are supposed to have at ten. Do you understand? That's what your rules say. I'm not saying anything but your rules. I read the rules. I try to follow the rules except when he starts talking smart to me. But listen, I gotta do something. Everybody in the city knew Christine Gardner. She's a trailblazer. I know Reverend, Mr. Burgess knows. She was along with Alma, Alma Fox and a bunch of women. Well, her son, Victor Allen Garfree, died. And we had the funeral up in my church, Bethel. That was also her church. Now, her fa, um, the cousin that did his funeral talked about Victor and was saying that Victor, oh, yeah, he was one, he was kinda mean. But he was one that you, you wouldn't lose an argument. That's what the reverend said. He said, we, we called each other brothers 'cause that's how they raised the big families. But we were really cousins. He said, you, you never lost, Victor never lost an argument. Okay, so when I got up and I spoke, I said I was from the building. I know more people would've came. We're old and it's cold, cold out there, the weather. And then I said, oh, Reverend, when you, you told him a lie. No, I didn't say like a lie, but you said that no one ever won an argument with him. And I said, oh, yes, I did. I, yes, I did. The reason why I'm saying about Christine Gardner is that he left a young family. He had twenty great-grand and fourteen grand, uh, young. So I got a chance to stand up and tell that family about their grandfather, grandmother. I explained that she was, during the time, she was with Christine, Christine herself, Alma Fox, Frankie Jeter, uh, uh, Dr. Edna McKenzie, Florence Bridges, Alma, Alma Slaughter, and Orly Kell. See, these women had been housewives and when they were mistreated. Now Toni had, she was a big woman. Her husband was big and he, he got sugar, got real small. He's in a wheelchair. She, she, she comes from work. He's in a wheelchair and the landlord is screaming and hollering. She said, oh, we're gonna stop that. And she started having meetings about the landlords. So I, if I could just say this, oh, I still got, but I just wanna say this. The only reason why I'm trying to extend this talk that I'm saying is that City of Pittsburgh should know that her son died because I believe a lot would've come just in memory of her. But she was a great woman. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other speakers, we'll go to the roll call. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gross, Mrs. Harris, President Crowe, Mr. Liddell, Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Kell Smith, Mrs. Strausberger, Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. All of our dutiful members went through the snow and the cold and trekked, you know, five miles on foot to get here. We appreciate your faithfulness and your dutifulness.
So did Ms. Brown.
So did Ms. Brown. All right, so we'll start with Finance and Law Committee, of which I am the chair. We have a deferred paper.
Bill six ninety-eight, ordinance amended to Pittsburgh code, Title One Administrative Article Seven, Procedure, Chapter one sixty-one, Contracts to Reflect Current Best Practices in Local Government Procurement.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Discussion, I think.
Yes, discussion. I'll defer to Councilwoman O'Connor.
Uh, thank you. This is the bill we've held for a couple weeks, months. This was worked on by our budget office and the mayor's budget office to have some oversight through the budget process. And these are amendments in front of us, so I'd like to make a motion to amend the bill.
Second.
Second. Amendments are in front of us. Any conversation on the amendments themselves, if there are no conversation?
I'd like time to look over them. I don't even know what they are.
Yeah, this is the first we've got.
I mean, this is something significant. It's our budget.
Um, okay, so we can still amend by substitution and work on the amended bill.
Okay, let's do that.
So the, that, we are on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. So we have a substitution by amendment. Back to Mr. O'Connor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, if we wanna hold, I'm perfectly fine with holding. I don't care. That's fine. Um, uh, this is, I don't know if Bill would like to come to the table and explain some of the amendments or would you just like to hold?
I'd just like to hold.
Okay.
All right, I need to. Can I have a motion?
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Thank you very much. Um, that moves us to, um, the next new paper.
Bill thirteen seventy, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter two-ten of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of Department of Public Works to accept a donation from Pittsburgh Three Rivers Marathon Inc. of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation on receiving this money? If no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill thirteen eighty-five, Ordinance Amended to Pittsburgh Code, Title One Administrative Article Seven, Procedures, Chapter one sixty-one, Contracts by Amending and Supplementing in Section one sixty-one thirty-eight, City of Pittsburgh Service Worker Prevailing Wage Ordinance.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
Need a second?
I'll defer to the councilman.
All right, basically, when we passed this bill in two thousand and ten, I believe, this is an update. And what we're doing is we are expanding to cover more facilities, including libraries, museums, almost anything that has public subsidy. So it will cover more, um, more workers, more building service workers and more food service workers so that they get prevailing wages. And I think it's just fair. So it's an update. It's not a major update. It's actually, um, but it's an update to the bill. It has the support of the unions and who helped champion this bill in the first place. Um, any other conversation?
I wanna thank you, Reverend, for always being a champion for, for the working people in the city.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation?
Thank you.
No other conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Maybe invoices.
No bills, invoices. Need a motion for the invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. I don't think there's any interdepartmental transfers. There are P-cards, which are on the table. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation about the P-cards? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. All right, they are approved. That takes us to the next committee, which is the Public Works Committee. Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. We have a new paper?
Bill thirteen seventy-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to Provide Funding to Conduct a Recycling Education Program and Purchase Blue Recycling Bins and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed Three Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars for This State's Purpose.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Ms. Smith, any conversation? Any other conversation? If not, uh, Ms. Harris?
Yes, how would these be, um, handed out? Do we know?
Sean Michaels here.
Someone from?
Yeah.
Someone from Public Works, please, come to the table. I think they're all going to Council District Nine.
Hey, Sean. Morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Please identify yourself with the public.
Certainly. I'm Sean Wagle. I'm with the Bureau of Environmental Services.
I wanna thank you for, for your work on this. Um, good, Councilman. I'm sorry.
We know where you got the idea from, but we wanna know if they're going to be handed out equally around the city.
Uh, well, certainly, we would want to, uh, now I see Director Gable just came in as well. Um, certainly, uh, we would be doing our best to handle them out equally. Um, we have yet to really come up with a plan. Um, we have not got the paperwork back yet from the state to officially start the grant. And we have over two years to actually spend the money. So it is in the process, yes.
So they will all be the blue cans?
Yes.
Okay. That people use outside their homes?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any idea who will be handing them out?
Last time it was P C R G, uh, not P C R G, um.
For the initial grant request, it's actually built into the grant that, uh, the, whatever company we ultimately purchase from, that could be part of what they do.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're looking upwards of thirteen thousand containers, so that's, that's an awful lot of manpower to get those containers out. So, um, a lot of the, the companies, that is a part of purchasing that many containers.
Okay. Any ideas, Mr. Gable?
Any ideas?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, this is not the first time. We've done this previously, uh, I believe, in the North Side neighborhood. So however, we did that with both in-house and with contractual. What's our?
I think it was the firehouses.
What's that?
I think it was the firehouses.
I don't know. Do you, who, who distributed the North Side?
Well, in the past, we've worked with Pennsylvania Resource Council. But again, it, through several years, it's been about fifty-two-hundred containers over three or four years. So it's just, uh, the volume in this, uh, it's a lot more. So we very well just might work with the company to to get them out more efficiently.
Yeah, just so it's equally around the city.
Yeah, not like it was last time with the North Side getting the bulk.
That was another group.
Yeah, and and the reasoning, a lot of the funding came, so we did have a lot of choice.
Thank you. That's right.
Yep, I'll chime in just quickly. Thank you very much. I know how dedicated you are. And you've been at this for a really long time, Sean. I think fifteen years more.
Yep, going on fifteen years.
Yeah. So, um, I'm a passionate, passionate recycler and I, I, I just sincerely wanna recognize your efforts and and everything that you bring to, uh, to recycling and, uh, and making our program as successful as what it is. I am always greatly encouraged when I come in on Wednesday mornings or Thursday mornings to see a sea of blue bags out there and that people are taking recycling seriously. But, um, with your help and assistance, we're gonna see seas of blue cans that will be out there. And people remain committed to recycling because the public might not know this at large, but I, I know that you do. The, the bag itself is not recyclable and it just, it, 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 what's the word I'm looking for? It files up the system, you know, and, um, and, and then we have to find ways to reuse a blue bag that, God forbid, we, you know, really need to have in the process anyway. So this is a really great idea. I'm really excited that, uh, that this is happening. And I just wanna recognize your work and say thanks.
Councilwoman Strausberger.
Thank you. I also am very enthusiastic about this. Um, I, I feel strongly that the rollout should be not just, I mean, that we should be giving it to people who actually requested and want it, not just giving it to people based on some other metric. Whether they use it or not, we don't know. You know, we should be actually identifying the people who want it and will use it and will, and could need it. I wonder if some of the funds couldn't be spent on the stickers that I've seen used. So if some, if there are people who already have their own bins but could get the stickers that remind them exactly of what is allowed to be recycled and what isn't. They could put it on the bins along with a recycling symbol. And whether they're blue bins or not, they could be, you know, identifiable to Environmental Services as recycling bins. I didn't know if it was flexible spending so that some of it could be spent on bins, some of it could be spent on those very low-cost stickers so that we're augmenting what people already have bought in the private marketplace, um, for those bins.
It, it's a possibility, certainly.
Okay, so it's not just for the bins. It could be spent on education in general.
Yeah, and there is a large component, a grant for education specifically.
Mm-hmm.
We, we do have a considerable amount. Um, I think it's about thirty-six thousand dollars that we've learned to spend on education.
Yeah, 'cause the stickers I saw, um, I think they were used on the North Side as well, but they have the photos of what you can and can't, the list, and really helpful reminder as you're taking it to the curb of what.
Yeah, I mean, to speak to that a little bit, uh, this three hundred and fifty thousand is the grant from the D E P. But, uh, the city will be out of its solid waste trust fund, be putting thirty-eight thousand dollars. We had to have a match towards this.
Oh, okay.
So that money could be used towards, and it does speak to that in the fiscal impact statement about stickers being applied to the, um, the bins. So we certainly will give that every consideration.
Excellent. Thank you. And thanks for your work on this. I'm really, really enthusiastic about more bins being, uh, given out.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gross.
Thank you. Um, I'm also supportive today. The bins were very popular. I got lots of calls in my office about the demonstration program that the city did. So I know that I'll have some, um, people requesting them as well. And, um, but I would also like to point out at this time, it was only a few weeks ago that someone took this single-use plastics, uh, pledge to not use single-use plastics, right? The No Plastics Please.
Yeah.
And so you, twenty years into recycling now or more, right, into municipal recycling, we really need to talk about how we're going to reduce the amount of plastics that are to go in those bins, right? And so, because I, I, I think most of us who are older and remember when we all started recycling have noticed that there's actually more going out to the curb than there was twenty years ago 'cause there's more coming into your house and so there's more going into the curb, out to the curb. But we're not sure how much of it, you know, internationally gets recycled. And we know that we have challenges finding recyclers for our plastic. Am I wrong?
Yes.
All right, so this is a big topic in itself, so I'm not gonna go on today. But I think really, well, I'm totally supportive of having the bins, um, to collect recyclables. We really need to talk about preventing them from even getting into our waste stream. Um, and that's, I, I think, a topic that lots of councilmembers are, are ready to have. So I just wanted to point that out since I didn't want the public to think that we weren't also thinking about that. And thank you for your work.
Anyone else first round? Anyone else first round? Start with Councilwoman Harris, second round.
Yeah, what about the garbage cans? Can we get some more of those out where you have taken them away from? We're finding out that there's a lot more garbage that needs picked up. And we have residents that have been picking it up. And just last night at the meeting, they said the garbage can's gone, so.
Are you talking about the litter receptacles we have on the streets?
Yes.
The simple answer is, um, yes. I mean, I, we're, we're looking at the data on the litter receptacles. We're finding that there's ones that aren't being used as often as they should, and we are relocating those receptacles. Um, so there's a strong possibility. I would just ask you to let me know what locations you feel are lacking that, and we'll give it every consideration.
Okay. I have a list of them, but the parks are one of the biggest.
I understand.
Um, and then, uh, talking about plastics, uh, I don't know if you've watched, I don't know if it was twenty-twenty or what, but the, what's, what's the kind we press down for the lines in for the walkways? What's that called?
Thermoplastic.
Yeah.
A thermoplastic.
Yeah, that is worse than any lid or one, any straw out there. Uh, there are some places that have already banned that because of it getting down into, um, our waters and, and streams. So, uh, can you take a look at that?
Well, actually, thermoplastic line striping actually comes under the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure now. I'd love to have that.
I still have never gotten a list with phone numbers.
I'd love to have that paving and stuff on my plate, but, you know.
I don't think any of us still have that list. So if you would give me the, the list of the people that work for you and the phone numbers, then I'll go and ask mobility.
We still have the really important jobs to do, so.
Okay, but, but it's very hard because.
I'll ask for an org chart for both, for you and O'Connor.
I have asked.
You have that?
I had it, but not with phone numbers.
I'll get you another one.
Thank you.
Or we won't introduce legislation.
Okay, that's great.
Ms. Gross.
Um, so there are certain topics of conversation where I feel Councilwoman Gross and I have been separated at birth. And we see the world very much the same way. And Councilwoman, uh, Kell Smith and I were talking about just the topic of reduce, reuse, recycle. And that when we, when we, when we bring up the topic of recycling, it has to be in the context of reduce and reuse as well. And I was saying to the councilwoman, I get, I get requests constantly for additional garbage cans, regardless of what the Main Street might be. And I, I always say, I'm happy to advocate, but I need your help too in, uh, reducing waste. It, it just cannot be this endless stream of single-use containers. You know, it's that time of year and all the foliage is gone. Open your eyes and just take a look at all of the garbage everywhere. You can't escape it. It's on every roadside and every stop sign and, you know, every side street. It's, it's so embarrassing to see that, that we, you know, not, not just that we haven't caught up with it, but that manufacturing hasn't caught up with the idea that we just cannot continue to just pummel this planet with single-use plastic containers. It's, it's, uh, it's an abomination. So, and having said that, one of the things I think we are doing, which I'm greatly encouraged to see, when I, I went to New York a couple of years ago and no matter, no matter where I went, um, I was asked whether or not, I was asked no matter where I went if I won, if I wanted a bag with my purchase. And I was so impressed by the fact that they were saying, you can carry this out of this retail establishment and you don't need a bag. And what I'm finding here on a local basis now is everywhere I go, I'm being asked, do you want a bag? And I say, thank you for asking me. No, I don't need a bag. We can leave that one behind. We don't need another one in the landfill. So I, I'm greatly encouraged by that, and I hope that's becoming a real trend locally here, not just in the city, but in the region wide, that every time we make a purchase, we do not need to leave that shop with a bag. It's just simply gonna end up in a landfill somewhere. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Ms. Smith?
I just wanna thank you for your work on the recycling and all the other things that you're working on, um, and, and for working on this as well. But I just wanna say, just real quickly, um, you know, paper straws, metal straws, uh, paper bags, paying for bottles to be recycled, those were all things us old people used to do. And so, just when you, so when people talk about, you know, not knowing something or wanting younger people to be a voice for the environment, just remember, we were the, one of the greatest voices for the environment. So just saying that.
Anyone else? No one else thinks for the old?
Thanks, Chris, thank you.
All those in favor?
Well, some of them are old, not me.
All those in favor signify by, by? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposers nay. Positive recommendation, next bill, please.
Bill thirteen seventy-seven. Resolution amending resolution number seven fourteen for the mayor and the acting director of the Office of Management and Budget and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Cutica for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization at a cost not to exceed one million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars over a three-year period with two one-year optional renewals.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Need a second.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, and we have Director Gable again. Could you introduce yourself for the public, please?
Chris Blasco, Product Manager, Innovation and Performance.
Thank you.
Good morning.
And Kevin Paulus.
Kevin Paulus, Assistant Director, Operating Budget.
District Two resident? Anyway, have to point that out once in a while. Anyway, I don't know who wants to speak to this first, you.
I'll start out and may have to defer to both Chris and Kevin. Previously, legislation was approved for this fleet telematics. We're coming back to amend it for a few costs. There was some amended fees, it was budgeted, but was amended in the original legislation for about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Kevin can speak to that if you need more details. There's an amount for about seventy thousand or so that's actually going to be committed to taking our paper routes and getting them inputted into the tablets so that the drivers actually have, just like you have now on your car, you hit a GPS and it tells you driving directions, that's what's going to happen with the snow routes. So those routes are being inputted into the tablets, they can then be told to, you know, pick a route, pick it up, route comes out, speaks to them, and they just drive it and run the route. The other twelve thousand.
We were here for this before, right?
Pardon me?
You were here for this before?
Yeah, it was a small, it was originally a legislator for the million four, and then since that time, we've made some adjustments to.
I'm just saying, because I see people looking like they're surprised about the route, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, basically, it was to really speak to the digitizing of the paper routes, but we found that there was an error in the first submission with the legislation, the hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And then there's twelve thousand, it's related to what is called HEARE data, H-E-R-E, and that's what Chris can speak to, it's related to our RouteSmart, but it's also tied to the routing and the paper routes and such.
Mr.?
Yeah, sure. So, good morning. HEARE data is an industry-standard routing tool. You know, we've put a not-to-exceed amount of twelve K in here for this. What it will allow Cutica to do, right, is to use the street segments in HEARE's data, which is like a GI, Geographic Information Systems database, right, to, you know, unify the street segments into a route. We worked with Cutica to assess our options, to decide on the best data that we would purchase to enable us to make the best routes possible, and we came to a mutual agreement that this is the best solution for us to make our routing decisions.
Thank you. I really have no questions, because I spoke with Director Gable while he sent an update.
Any other conversation? Anyone else? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Positive recommendation?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Gable, thank you very much for your work. We hosted a series of community meetings, and Mr. Gable was at most of the meetings and probably was one of our better speakers, and I just want to thank you for your friendship, your work for the city, you have, you are really doing an excellent job, and I just wanted to publicly thank you and congratulate you on all your hard work.
Thank you very much, President, and you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings it to the Human Resources Committee. Mrs. Harris is the chair, we have a deferred paper.
Bill thirteen oh nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., for a citywide time and attendance system and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, not to exceed one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I need a motion.
Motion to table.
Second.
Table.
Do you want me to explain briefly?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the administration not only called myself, but Councilwoman Harris, who chairs, and they made a motion to table this bill. I don't know if you were told that, but they were, I was called by the administration to table. We could always bring it back if we have to. But if she was the chair and there was a motion to table.
Were you aware of this?
Yeah.
There's really no discussion on table.
Grant was emailed.
I just, Grant's emailed, and we'll follow up.
We need a second. We still need a second.
All right, so, first of all, first of all, first of all, first of all, there was a motion to approve before there was a motion to table.
No, there wasn't.
Yes, there absolutely was, so, because that's what I asked for. I didn't ask for a motion to table, I asked for a motion to approve, someone said, I thought someone said, but it doesn't matter. If there's a motion to table, which one of you, I was trying to defer to the chair of the committee, who is Mrs. Harris?
I made the motion, I seconded.
My point was, I didn't recognize him, because it was your committee, I was deferring to you.
Make a motion.
There you go.
Right.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Is there a motion to table? Is there, Ms. Harris, there a such a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, we need a roll call vote on the motion to table.
Mr. Clarkhill.
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
President Gross, Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburg and Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Seven members, yes, zero.
All right, thank you very much, that means any member can bring it back up. That takes us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Gross is the chair. We have a re-committed paper.
Bill thirteen fifty-two, resolution amending resolution number five seventy-four, providing for the implementation of a residential sticker parking program in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code, Chapter five forty-nine, so as to amend the streets and remove addresses, including in Area K.
I need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Second.
I'll defer to the Councilwoman.
I'd actually would love to hold this for two weeks until I get an opportunity to speak more directly with twelve residents on the street and get a sense of where they stand.
Is there a motion?
Motion to hold two weeks?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, we have a deferred paper.
Bill twelve thirteen, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven, Title Two, I'm sorry, of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as the Westinghouse Memorial, located in Shinley Park, block and lot numbers twenty-seven S one five zero 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 one in the fourteenth ward of the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, next bill, please.
Bill thirteen seventy-one, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, that certain structure known as the Carrick Municipal Hall, located at eighteen oh six Brownsville Road in the twenty-ninth ward of the city.
And then a motion to hold for public hearing, Ms. Gross.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That takes us to the Urban Recreation Committee, Mr. Clarkhill is the chair, we have a deferred paper.
Bill twelve seventy-two, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter one seventy-three, Section two of the City Code, the mayor to name the North Side section of the Three Rivers Heritage Trail after former Mayor Thomas J. Murphy, in recognition of the twenty-fifth anniversary of his inauguration as the fifty-seventh mayor of the city.
Need a motion, Mr. Clarkhill.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is there somebody here for this?
Is there?
Well, I can just ask generally, I thought we had legislation in that you had to be dead for two years before anything could be named after you in the city.
I remember that.
Yeah.
There is, there's legislation.
You can override.
But I'm wondering, is that what happens?
I don't think he's, I think he's alive and well with us.
Right, no, I know that, but I'm just saying, we follow our own rules.
I don't think that happened. Well, we have two, we have two options.
No, I mean, I'm supportive, I like Tom Murphy, I like the trail, I like his wife, I like his kid.
We have two seconds, we have two choices.
You don't want to break the rules.
I don't want, but I don't want to break the rules.
We have two choices. We can approve and find out, and we can always recommite on Tuesday, or we can hold. What is your preference?
Let's vote for it.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about it. I don't think that there's anything else well, more well-suited for Tom Murphy than the trails. I remember being down there with him, and he'd get right in the river carrying those tires on, from one end to the other. And who knew that the trails were going to be as beautiful as they are, and everybody just loves them. And I think to have the trails from one side, the north side, to the other side is very fitting for him.
Okay, good. Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
I'll abstain till this week.
That takes us to, what abstention? That takes us to the Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strasburg is the chair, we have a new paper.
Bill thirteen seventy-eight, resolution amending resolution twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Q-SIN Technologies for the purchase of constituent relationship management software services necessary for the operations of the city's three-one-one response line for a period of five years. Total cost not to exceed one hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars by extending the term for one additional year and by increasing the authorized amount by fifty-three thousand, five hundred, ninety-five dollars and thirty cents, for a total of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred, eighteen dollars and thirty cents.
Need a motion, Ms. Strasburg.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second, it's in your hands.
Would you like to come up? Good morning, Wendy, how are you?
Good morning, great, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. So this is the technology that three-one-one uses and that other members of the, well, members of the public can use in some capacity, members of council and their staff can also use in kind of a greater capacity, that I've found to be incredibly useful when it comes to constituent services tracking, three-one-one tracking, and understanding exactly how, you know, keeping up with three-one-one complaints and requests and being able to see the back end of it, which previously didn't exist, we would have to come to you or to someone from three-one-one to understand exactly where something, the progress that a certain issue was making. Could you just explain, as you explained to me last week, to council members, why the increase for one year?
The majority of the reason is the increase in the Google mapping services, that's an integral part of the software. Apparently, Google mapping services have gone up by approximately ten percent, some of their specific services by as much as four hundred percent, as well as, we know from our department, the price of finding good help, you know, they want to have great engineers there, working on their products, so.
And you're satisfied with this product and this technology, and it works for you?
I've been really happy with it.
Great, okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any other conversation? I saw Ms. Gross first.
Yeah, just briefly, just to recap, it was, compared to four or five years ago, I used to have, I would call over, and I remember the first time I did it, when I was like, I asked my staff, and it was, you know, back in twenty-fourteen, well, what are the cases in three-one-one? Oh, we can't, we won't, you know, we can't, we call over there, it's too many. And I said, well, have them export it. And you did, you sent over, it was like, it took five minutes to export into Excel, but then we had this Excel sheet, and so it now seems prehistoric. At that time, that was like, kind of exciting, we got to see all of the cases, but now, it's every single hour of every single day that they're able to talk to the person on the phone and then see live without, you know, days of delay or weeks of delay, kind of to pull the information. So I know my office is using it all day long, every day, so I'm supportive of this measure, and think, I know it was a big transition to get to this, to this point.
But well worth it.
Yes.
Any other conversation? Ms. Smith.
I just want to thank Wendy and her staff, you really do a great job. It's one of the hardest jobs in the city, hearing the complaints all day long, and then for people to say three-one-one does nothing, when the fact is, you are reporting it to the people that are supposed to be doing some of those things. So I want to thank you, because I know it's difficult sometimes to hear some of the comments, and I think you do a really great job, I think your staff does a great job, and you've always done a great job, and I don't think there's anything that's going to change that, so.
Thank you. I second that, thanks.
Any other conversation? Mr. Lavelle?
Thank you. Could you just, I'm not sure all the offices know exactly how to do all of this, would you just be willing to reach out to Dan Wood in my office, just to make sure my staff understands how to fully utilize the system?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. That takes us to the Inner Government Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the chair, we have a new paper.
Bill thirteen seventy-two, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land, buy-in between the URA and Module Design, Inc., or an entity to be formed for the sale of Block eighty-three A, Lot two sixty-six in the eleventh ward of the city, Council District Nine.
I have a request, can you just read all four? Read all the other?
We can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill thirteen seventy-three, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land, buy-in between the URA and Module Design, Inc., and Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, or an entity to be formed for the sale of Block eighty-three A, Lots two sixty-four in the eleventh ward of the city. Bill thirteen seventy-four, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land, buy-in between the URA and Action Housing, Inc., or a related entity for the sale of Block twenty-five D, Lots one oh four, one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight in the sixth ward. Bill thirteen seventy-five, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land, buy-in between the URA of Pittsburgh, CWPD LLC, for the sale of Block seventy E, Lots three hundred and three twenty-five, and Block one oh seven H, Lot one hundred in the twenty-eighth ward of the city.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Need a second.
Second.
Mr. O'Connor?
I spoke to Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Kell Smith, they're supportive of their projects, I'm assuming if it's on there that you're supportive of yours, so a motion to approve, that's about it.
Ms. Smith?
Second, I'm very supportive, I really want to thank the administration on working on this, this is something in Ferrywood that they have been waiting for, for a very long time, and I want to thank the URA for this investment and the administration, I'm excited for our residents.
Any other conversation, Ms. Gross?
I'd like to make a brief comment also. Similarly, this project is consolidating lots for another new building of affordable housing, also in Lawrenceville. Remember the announcement yesterday that we're requiring private developers to include affordable units in their market rate buildings? And then also, we got one of the nine percent light tax to build an entirely new building of a very affordable housing, right near the Doughboy statue at the gateway to Lawrenceville, so the entire neighborhood is enthusiastically supportive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that the building that's already up, or is that a new building that's going to be built?